And we have a speaker card on this topic, so we will ask Mr. Juan Ojeda to come to the podium again. We're gonna have other comment first. Okay, thank you.
Would you be a member from the board and other partners and students here? When I started being with the board, it's part of the student association. This time I would like to oppose to this petition that you're trying to do once again because we, parents, don't have any information. I ask you for information that you're supposed to share with us as parents and community members that we be informed what it means to us because I don't understand. Me opongo a esta petición que ellos quieren hacer de la forma como ellos son elegidos por medio del voto ya que nosotros como padres tenemos el derecho de ser informados. Porque es el beneficio, porque es el beneficio de cambiar de un método a otro método para elegir a ellos porque ellos son elegidos por medio del voto, las personas que pueden votar. Entonces yo me opongo a que se lleve esto a cabo porque, porque ellos nunca nos han dado información a nosotros. So, I would like we to have a workshop, to do something about this so parents be informed. Because I have never heard anything in any school about this. I have never heard anything in my community that I can be informed to understand what it means for my community. So creo que ninguna escuela se nos ha informado de este cambio que ellos quieren hacer ni en la comunidad se ha mencionado ese cambio que ellos quieren hacer y por qué lo quieren hacer. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Ojeda. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Cora to introduce the next speaker and topic.
So this evening on information item 6A draft map plans for elections in a bi-trusty area election method. Draft maps are to be presented in preparation for sharing them with the public at community forums for further input before conducting legally mandated post-map hearings to adopt a final bi-trusty area map plan for use in 2020 government board member election. So what I'd like to do is I'm gonna introduce Cooperative Strategies as the company that's working with us on creating these draft maps. Mr. Andrew Chitipong is here from Cooperative Strategies. And Mr. Ojeda, it's perfect what you said because that's what these meetings are for. This is the third presentation that's being done on this. That's why, you know, parents are invited to come to all board meetings and that's why we're live streaming these meetings as well to provide the information to those who can't come. So, perfect that you're here, perfect that the other parents are here. And I'm not gonna steal Mr. Chitipong's thunder, but the purpose in a nutshell is to provide the city of Santa Paula trusty areas that cover the entire city. So with that, Mr. Chitipong, all yours.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll go a little bit more about it later on. So, good evening, president, board members, superintendent, members of the cabinet and community. My name is Andrew Chitipong here from Cooperative Strategies. I'm gonna give the presentation on the maps that we drafted for these school districts and go a little bit over where we are with the process right now. So, this is the current timeline that we have for this school district. So, March 13th was the first pre-map public hearing that we had where we're receiving any...
Can you get that one light up? Sorry, Mr. Redd.
Renee?
Not the other one. Turn that one off so that...
Okay. So, March 13th was the first pre-map public hearing for giving the community some background of what is going on. April 10th was the second pre-map public hearing. And today, June 12th, is just a presentation on the maps that we have created so far. We did push the community input meeting and the first public hearing towards the end of August and beginning of September to give the community a little bit more time since they're on vacation for summer break to join us for the community input meetings when they're back from their break to help us make these maps, the best possible maps for the community.
So, Mr. Chitipong, can I interrupt quickly? On the August 20th and August 28th, like you just said, the community input meeting, the parents are here. Right now they're listed in Glen City. When is the board members asked? Do they have to be in Glen City because they'd be at different ends of the city? They, that's up to the board. We've just, because we've had all our board meetings at Glen City, that's why it was suggested with the board recommends to put them at the two opposite ends. We can do that. But that's the opportunity for the community to come and give your input. So please mark your calendar, August 20th and August 28th, and we will send something home. We'll send something home on paper and also by phone.
August 28th is the second input meeting, so that's your chance to provide us with any additional feedbacks to the maps that you're about to see later on. What, something you might not, what you might like, what you might not like, any changes that you want to make to the maps later down the line. So, September 11th is the first public hearing as well as the public hearing on the general waiver request where the board will approve of the general waiver request. And September or October 9th is the second and final public hearing on the trustee area scenarios where the board will choose one of the scenarios that is drafted depending on how many scenarios we come up with. By October 9th, they'll have the option to choose one of the scenarios. And then from there, the data will be submitted to the county for processing that we take into account when we're drawing these areas. The first is that each area should be equal number of population. We do have a 10% variance between the smallest area and the largest area. On the next slide, I'll go into more detail on what those numbers are. So they also have to be drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, the Compt Act, and contiguous, so no Swiss cheese-looking maps. Respect communities of interest as much as possible, follow man-made and natural geographic features, respect incumbency, it is a consideration, but it's not the sole consideration when we're drawing these maps, and other considerations such as the school boundaries, vertical locations of school sites. So here on this slide, we have the district's demographics. We are using the census data from 2010 because those were the last official recorded numbers by the government. And as you can see, at the bottom of the table, the total population within the school district is about 32,000. And if we divide that by five for each of the board members, each area should contain about 6,400 people in that area. And with that 10% variance, it's gonna have plus or minus 640 people per area. So we also have the demographic breakdown of the whole community. So the Hispanic Latino community, total population is 77.91%, the white population 20.5%, African-American 0.31%, and so on and so forth going down that table. We also have the age of the people who are 18 years and older on the next column over. And that number comes out to be 22,566. And we also have the demographic breakdown for that population as well. But what we're really gonna focus more on is this slide right here. And this is the citizens' voting age population. So this is all your eligible voters within your school district. And on the left, we have the total number of eligible voters within the school district to be 16,720 along with the demographic breakdown as well for the Hispanic Latino community. There is 65.93% eligible voters. White, the white community, almost 30%, African-American at 0.33%, and so on and so forth going down that table. On the right, you'll see a zoomed-up version of the map of the city of Santa Paula. And this is a representation of the density that is the Hispanic Latino community within the city of Santa Paula. So the lighter colors representing less dense areas of Latino eligible voters and the darker areas representing a higher density of the Hispanic Latino community, citizens' voting age population. So we actually use this map as the base map when we're starting to draw these areas. So the whole goal is that if you can see the 65%, 65.93%, the goal is to increase that to a number as high as possible to have more representation and more voting power for the Hispanic Latino community. So, because it is over 50%, it's a pretty heavily majority-minority population. So we're gonna try to increase this to maybe 80% or more just to increase that voting power for that community during the next election. So here is the first map. I'm gonna walk over, walk through the layout of how it was symbolized and what it means. So we do have to use the census blocks that are provided by the Census Bureau. And the census blocks are kind of like the puzzle pieces that make up the district. Each census block comes in a different shape and size with its own different data within that census block. So you might see some oddly shaped lines. You might wonder why we haven't made those lines thinner. It's just because of the way the census blocks are given to us and we just have to use whatever we have. So each color represents an area for the trustee. So trustee area 1 is yellow, trustee area 2 is green, area 3 is red, area 4 is blue, and area 5 is purple. Each area and color is gonna be the same throughout each scenario to be associated with that trustee area. And then on the top left, on top left of this slide, we have the extent view. Right now you're currently seeing the zoomed-up version of the city of Santa Paula, but the district extends more, so you can see how far the trustee areas extend up north and to the south and to the east of your district. And then we have a legend here to see where each elementary school, middle school, and high school is located on a map as well as the board member represented by the star and where they live. And then at the bottom of that, by the colors, the trustee areas, each trustee area is gonna be represented by a year and that year represents when that area becomes available for the next election. Okay? So I'm just gonna now talk about how we kind of divided the area. So trustee area 1 in yellow, we did take up the whole northern part of the district coming down to halfway where this geographic, the mountain area is and then staying above South Mountain Road as a first area as well as taking in part of the community where the Dell Elementary School is. And then area 2 in green, we did capture both high schools within the same area as well as Landshire Elementary School down there as the second area. And then area 3 in green, or area 3 in red is that central part of the city taking McKeville Elementary School, going just above Harvard Street. And then area 4 in blue, we're taking that whole eastern or western side of the school district following the elementary school boundary for Briggs, I believe, of Briggs' Elementary School District as its own comparison to shift wide for the San Antonio community. So I'm just gonna highlight area 3 here with the 74.17%, so that area specifically increased the voting power of that community by about nine percentage points. So that is like one of the goals that we are trying to achieve, is just to get that number higher in each area. And then area 2, very similar to what we're getting in area 1. You can see some differences in this map where, let's see, area 1 in yellow, very similar to the green area here. The only difference with the yellow area is now it's taking Glen City Elementary School within that area. And then trustee Need and Luna actually live within the same census block. So unfortunately, we couldn't get them in their own area because we can't cut that census block in half. And then area 2, the main difference here is that this is going more south of Main Street. And then area 3 in red, it is following Telegraph and South Mountain Road, keeping that whole area within its own trustee area. And then area 5 in purple, and you'll see in this upper area up here, it'll extend all the way north up to the very top of the district as well as going from one side to the other side. So it's a very large area, but the amount of people is relatively the same within each area. So what does that do to the numbers? And just to point it out again, the highest number here out of both scenarios is 90.84%. So that's 25 percentage points higher than the shift-wide number, which was 65. So those are your eligible voters that will be voting in the next election for that area in trustee area number 4. So those are some of the key points that we're trying to make with this, switching over to the transition stage of this process. So I'm now gonna turn it over to the board, any questions or comments?
I saw one of the audience taking pictures. This can be found on our website if you go through the corner that says Agenda. The actual PowerPoint is loaded, so you don't, you can be sat as a picture.
Is it accessible in Spanish as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
We will be. Yeah. There's, most of the stuff on there is primarily numbers, the numbers are numbers. But we could probably look at the other areas that are in print that we can get translated, so we'll do that. So again, looking at the dates right there, the important dates are August 20th and August 28th. And the board did that on purpose. They didn't want to do anything in July because it's summer vacation. A lot of families are going on vacation, so we wanted to wait till everybody came back from break.
I'm sorry, but will you can ask questions at the community meeting? This is just information sharing at this time. We're not...
Just on the thing I wanna have it, when is it gonna be available for in Spanish?
Well, we're gonna work on it. We don't know when, but we're working on it. Thank you. So, does the board have any questions at this time?
Now I just want to encourage participation from the residents because we'd really like to have your input on what was done and what changes you would like to see or just getting more information that you would like in those public meetings and ask and answer. So, encourage you to come.
Perhaps we can reach a consensus right now as to if we would like to change August 28th to perhaps Barbara Webster or someplace in the east part of the district? Is the rest of the board in agreement with that? Okay, so August 28th will be changed probably to someplace in the eastern part of the district, most likely Barbara Webster, but we will get notices up to you. And we will have interpreters available at each meeting.
All right. I'd also like to point out that the board is as confused or this information is as new to us, so it's not like we know anything more than you do. If you have followed any of the news, many of the local school districts and cities have been sued and they've been going through this, so we just didn't want to be sued and pay extra money, so we started to process ourselves.
Yes, and to answer Mr. Ojeda, we didn't have any information prior to tonight. So it's very timely that you made those comments and this is the start of the information sharing.
I guess it would be a great day to give them a chance to do it in Spanish because we have a lot of parents here. So if you said we want parents, here they are, but why not we do it in Spanish?
Yeah, we're working on that. And tonight's meeting is in Spanish, so...
Any other questions from the board on the maps?
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to 6B. First reading, board policy, 5148 students, student voter registration. Dr. Cora.
Yes, board trustees recognize that community engagement and civic participation are important parts of student education. And I'm gonna actually give some credit to Renee Garcia.
Yes.
Renee brought this up to me, Renee, and who was with you that gave her?
I actually have to give the credit to the youth that was there and I am just here to support them and they moved us forward.
But thank you for sharing the credit, but you came first. And the other person that came with you was?
Lucia.
Lucia. They both came with me and shared about would we consider providing this for our students? I did some homework. They provided me. I got some information. I got ahold of the superintendent Kenny DeLeon from the Yaxstar High School District who already have a board policy. He shared it with us. And so what we're bringing to you tonight is the first reading of the policy which will allow students to preregister before they turn 18, two weeks in the fall and two weeks in the spring to be able to register. So like it's time until they turn 18 that have already preregistered. So with that, are there any questions from the board? I will say this, I think it's a great thing for our students.
Right, we'll get them started in the process early. I did have one question. The voter registration drives will, it says Assembly Bill 1817 designates, designates the last two full weeks in April and September as High School Voter Education Week. My question is, the first two weeks of April are spring break. Will there be any problem with having this drive the last two weeks of April?
I just have to check and see if there's anything that allows us to move around the dates because if we are on break, can we do that? I'm not sure if legislation locks it into the last two weeks or not, so that's something I need to find out.
Okay.
And is our, is our spring break on the calendar first two weeks right now?
They are. I checked it.
Yeah.
And I didn't know whether that was a problem coming back from spring break, generally, I mean, the student registration, but since voter registration, but since we know about it, we can start doing the research. Well, thank you very much. If it was our first reading, it'll come back in July. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. 6C, use of facilities by the Santa Paula Youth Football League, Santa Paula High School Stadium, Jones Field, from Dr. Cora.
Yes. Information item, this information item is regarding use of facilities for Santa Paula High School Jones Field Stadium from the Santa Paula Youth Football League. I understand that in the past, we've always had the Santa Paula Youth Football League using our football stadium. And I'm not sure if the president is here. No, okay, because I understand it usually comes and speaks each year. But it is to use our field and my understanding is that they've done a good job of cleaning up after themselves. They've been using it now for, I don't know how many years, but my understanding is quite a while, so... I thought the president was gonna be here and mention some information, but my understanding is they've done a good job.
Okay. 6D, public hearing on the local control accountability plan for 2019-20. The Board of Trustees of the Santa Paula Unified School District will consider input from the public in accordance with the local control funding formula and prior to the adoption of the local control accountability plan. The local control accountability plan is available for review at the district office at 201 South Stecco Drive, Santa Paula, during normal business hours and online on the Santa Paula Unified School District website homepage, santapalunified.org. You can also find the maps. So at this moment, I will open the public hearing at 7:16 PM. Do we have any comments or public input?
I don't, should I?
Uh, yes, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the board and the partners and students here. President, when I started being with the board, the partners, the students, I presented. I would like to say that I request for training for these meetings and I never had an answer. I suggest it's spiral for you, but they said they never answered. But once again, I have been in the committee for about two years and I still don't understand what it really means as Elka Minutes. Estaba por cerca de dos años dentro de la junta de Elka y si vos in entender realmente la función de Elka. He requiso yo que se nos dé entrenamiento a los padres para entender más profundamente el significado que nosotros como padre tenemos, pero no lo han respondido. Este alguien dijo que yo sugería una agencia que da entrenamientos para padres, pero ellos dijeron que ellos nunca contestaron. And I think I have the right, I'm not saying, I'm sure I have the right to request for training and I never had it. So, yo pensaba que tenía el derecho, pero no, yo estoy seguro que tengo el derecho de pedir entrenamiento, pero ellos me lo están mirando. Se está poniendo en la mesa 15, más de 15 millones de dólares que produce nuestros estudiantes, que esa es una ayuda extra que da el gobierno. They are now planning what to do with more than 15 million dollars and all this money is coming from our students that, for the needs that they have, they're supposed to get this money and use it for things. Ellos deberían usar este dinero para ayudar a estos estudiantes, especialmente a los que están al pasado. And I have this list here that I gathered in the last Elka meeting, on and mid-board there. Este avisado, la de la última junta que tuvimos del comité de Elka, bueno, no es un comité, es una junta. La persona de board estaba ahí que es pan y estuvo mit, este... Pero realmente creo que hay mucho dinero que se está utilizando en otras cosas que no se deben de utilizar. I guess there is a lot of money that has been planned to use in things that don't need to be used. And I guess, y creo yo que todo lo que dijeron los padres, and I guess everything that the parents said needs to be put in the table and be part of the money, the 15 million dollars. Creo que todos los comentarios que hicieron los padres, las necesidades, deben entrar dentro de este dinero para responder a nuestras peticiones de tutoría.
Thank you, Mr. Ojeda. Thank you very much. Okay. If there aren't any other comments, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. Okay, first reading, 6F, Alcat Feral Addendum. Dr. Cora.
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, invite anyone who's interested. We have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Ojeda for Monday, June 17th at 5 o'clock PM to answer all those questions. So the meeting doesn't have to be just for Mr. Ojeda. So if anybody's interested, please visit the district office. That's this coming Monday, 5 o'clock PM, so please come join him. So, speaking to what you were just mentioning, we're providing that information he's requesting, so the more the merrier.
Thank you, Dr. Cora.
And with that being said, I'm gonna quickly share that the Elka...
We're at 6...
Yeah, it's our goal. I was just mentioning that, talking about Elka, so with... So again, on Monday, if you're interested to learn about the Elka, just please join us 5 o'clock PM on Monday. So with that being said, on 6C, local control accountability plan. Staff will present the local accountability plan in accordance with the LCFF. School districts are required to develop, adopt annually, adopt or update every year. School districts are required to develop, adopt annually, adopt or update a three-year El Cap using the template adopted by the California State Board of Education. The El Cap identifies how districts address the state's priorities and metrics, and how expenditures are in accordance with statutes. So we have our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Ms. Christine Sheckley, who's gonna do a presentation, Ms. Sheckley, as leading into it.
Good evening. Tonight, Ms. Sheskeski and I will provide a brief overview of the El Cap. The El Cap is located on our district website, if you go to the main homepage. Yes, at the bulletin board on the right-hand side, you'll see two thousand nineteen twenty Local Control Accountability Draft. If you click on that, it'll take you to two resources. If you click on the draft, Local Control Accountability Plan here, it'll take you to the one hundred and ninety-seven-page plan. And the good news for tonight is we are not going over all one hundred and ninety-seven pages. But it is available for you at the District Office, as well, it's available online as well. This year is the final year of our three-year El Cap. And the El Cap has a couple of new components this year. And one of the new components is the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. So that is the first page that you see after the cover page. So I'll turn it over to our C D O to talk a little bit about the Budget Overview for Parents.
The budget is mine. This is intended by C D E to help try and make it more transparent to parents and put it in terminology that's not mumbo jumbo we talk about all day long, but stuff that everybody can probably understand. It has some graphics on the left, you can see a pie chart that reflects all of the revenue that comes into the district, what we're estimating for next year. The blue is the state funding called LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula. A portion of that is our supplemental concentration dollars, which is what this plan designates how those funds will be spent. So in total, this is the pie, this is the supplemental concentration, fifteen million, fifteen point three million dollars estimated for next year of our total sixty million dollars in LCFF funding. So about a quarter of our LCFF funds. And then it goes down below, it has a little bit of a narrative, it talks about how we have a seventy million dollar budget, and then it writes out the dollars. If you keep scrolling down, you'll see another graphic that shows our total expenditures estimated for next year compared to our supplemental concentration expenditures. So we're estimating a total general fund budget of seventy-two million. Of that fifteen million will be supplemental concentration expenditures. And then it goes again, talks about it in a narrative standpoint. And then at the very bottom, there's a statement about all the things that are not in the El Cap. So our general operating budget as far as administration, basing the classroom teachers, custodial, maintenance, repairing our facilities, all those things are not included in the El Cap. And so this is a statement as to what that is. And then if you go down below, then it takes a look back, and we have to report on what we spent in eighteen nineteen, the year that we're ending right now. And basically, we received less funds this year because we're gonna get additional funds for next year. So we estimate that we'll end the year spending about fourteen point three million dollars. Based off of that, we will be rolling some funds into next year, and those have been identified to be used towards safety, additional safety measures for the district, because that was a high need of our stakeholders. And we received a lot of input that that's an important investment for our district.
Just for a minute, sorry, down, scroll down. So this is page one of the one ninety-seven. But before I begin, I want to thank the parents. I see many of you here who have been part of our El Cap Advisory Committee. We met five times this school year, and we review El Cap. The El Cap Committee is an advisory committee. So they offer advice and advise the Board of Trustees, who ultimately approves the El Cap. We've had several meetings, we gather input from not only the El Cap Advisory, D E's input. So what we do is we have these meetings, we take all the input, and then we offer recommendations to our Board of Trustees. We had an El Cap study session with the Board of Trustees, where all of the stakeholder input was shared. So tonight, attached is our El Cap, first draft of our El Cap. And so, Julianne, if you could please go to the other tab. Like you said, we're not gonna go over all one hundred and ninety-seven pages. What we're gonna focus in on, the other attachment to El Cap summary. If you go back to the website, here. This is a summary of the one hundred and ninety-seven pages. The El Cap actually begins with our story. We talked a little bit about our district, we talked about what our greatest accomplishments were this school year, what our greatest challenges are. And we did identify that we need to continue to focus on our unduplicated students, especially our English learners and our students with disabilities. So you'll see unduplicated students heavily represented throughout all of our El Cap. The district, I believe, is about eighty-nine percent of our kids are living in poverty, about thirty-nine percent E L, over five hundred students qualify as homeless, and we have about seven percent migrant. So we continue to keep focused on our unduplicated students. And that's what Sherri said, those fifteen million dollar funds are principally directed towards. Because we have such a large percentage of unduplicated students, our funds are mostly directed district-wide. So what I'm gonna do tonight is, if you can scroll down to goal one. I'm going to hit the highlights and share a little bit about the actions and services that have been modified or that are new. I will share with the Board of Trustees, we have taken all the recommendations for our study session, and those have been incorporated. So the El Cap should look very, very familiar to all of you. Before I start, I just want to point out that a few of the actions and services have been reordered. So if you look at last year's and this year's, the letters don't all align. If you want to know what has changed, it is all laid out in the annual review. There's an analysis of every goal, and we documented what those changes were in there. Also, as previously discussed at our El Cap study session, we have incorporated indirect costs, and cabinet engaged in an activity to identify base program, and then identify supplemental actions and services that are principally directed towards our unduplicated students, and those are now added into the El Cap. So we talked about all that at our study session, I just want to reiterate, those changes are in the El Cap. Another change this year, the actions and services that you see on the summary sheet, and actually in the one hundred and ninety-seven-page El Cap, are only those actions and services that are funded through supplemental concentration monies. You're not seeing Title I actions and services, grant-funded services in the El Cap. Okay, and that's a little different because of full funding and some regulations. I'll start with goal one. I just hit a couple of the highlights. I do want to point out goal one H, retain the Math TOSA. We heard parents, we need more tutorials. Next year, our Math TOSA will teach two courses at Santa Paula High School. She will also be available every day during lunch. Because what our kid said, sometimes I work after school, I have commitments before. So we will have a certified math teacher available at lunch every day to help out with any students who need some math help. That's different. In addition, I've shifted the schedule. She will be available every day after school at Santa Paula High School, a certified Math TOSA, to offer support for our students. So it's one thing that we've heard from our parents, give us some predictability in tutorials. Our parents need to know, kids, you need to know when tutorials are happening. So that's a change in one H. We also will retain an additional teacher at Isbell Middle School to lower class size in grade eight. One J, we changed increased access to technology now that we're one-to-one. At most of our schools and most of our grade levels, we're continuing to buy library books to keep the collections updated for our students. One L, retain data service specialist position. We have a position here, data services, and she will be responsible for collecting all of our data, giving our principals time to analyze and respond to achievement data. So that is now being funded in El Cap. And Q is new, each site has allocations, additional allocations, to go towards improving educational outcomes for the kids at each respective school. Goal two, talks about parent involvement. We're gonna continue with parent involvement, looking at opportunities. We do have a parent leadership session going all through summer, and that's facilitated by Mr. Castanero, as well as Robert Chaparro from Ventura College. We are looking into some other options, but again, our parents said, give us leadership opportunities, so we've contracted through them. We're also seeking out additional opportunities for professional development. All of our TOSAs will be delivering parent involvement sessions next year in their areas.
Ms. Doreen, would you please tell everybody what TOSA stands for?
Oh, Teacher on Special Assignment. These are teachers that are outside of the classroom who support the educational program. We've heard from our parents, and our parents said, give us some strategies on math coming forward. Give us some strategies on how we can support our kids in accessing technology. I've corrected all of the TOSAs to submit a parent involvement schedule for next year. So we are taking your feedback and incorporating as much as we can in here. B and C involve additional stipends and supplemental admin positions. There is a recommendation to add an intervention coordinator at Isbell Middle School in the budget, under two D. Two E, there is a built-in in the budget, the recommendation to add a second career tech education teacher in agriculture to help manage the new district agricultural center, as well as to help facilitate field trips and maintain our beautiful ad center that we opened this past year. L, in addition to providing transportation for district athletic events, we included athletic stipends in there, again, above and beyond base program. Oh, implement GATE program. We've completely restructured the GATE program to be more inclusive of all students, our English learners, students with disability. We will be using a cognitive abilities test, and that will be administered to every fourth grader in fall and every third grader in spring, to ensure that we are looking for giftedness with all of our students, regardless of language and disability. So we've been working to revamp that program and are rolling that out in fall. We're continuing to fund grade elective classes, our robotics, our engineering. We're adding an introduction to video production at Isbell Middle School, and we're adding a dance class at Santa Paula High School, introduction to ethnic studies. So our kids have said we want more electives. The Board of Trustees, three years ago, gave us a directive to create more Mesa-like electives. We have those throughout Isbell Middle School now, and kids are taking advantage of that. One area we know we need to continue to improve on is there are wonderful things happening in Santa Paula Unified, but we have to get the word out. We have to get the word out in our community. So we continue that action and service, and we will be working diligently to increase how we communicate and market our wonderful district. That's goal two, just go down to goal three. We are expanding restorative justice to our elementary school. It doesn't mean that kids don't get consequences. It means that we teach restorative practices in addition to the consequences they might endure. We're building good people. Also, we are expanding the school-based substance abuse intervention program. This spring, the S R O, Hecoramidis, provided a few substance abuse workshops for parents that will continue next year. And so thank you, parents, for your feedback on that. I, we're gonna continue to fund the teen daycare program and related services with a direction on the alternative program. We're gonna make sure that we continue to meet the needs of our teen parents. And we're retaining the district safety coordinator and the staff at the sites. And goal four.
Not much change, we're gonna continue all the services from last year. We're rolling up, there was one for street safety measures. It'll, if there's any expenses, that'll be in the implement safety measures across the school site. And as I had mentioned, we'll have some funds that roll over from the current year, so that'll almost double the funding for next year and complete a number of projects that we're currently planning.
And we did add these bullets in the lower right-hand corner. Because again, with communication, just because it's not in the four boxes doesn't mean that services are not happening in Santa Paula Unified. It means they're not funded through supplemental concentration funds in El Cap. So last year, you saw the school resource officer in goal three. The reason it's not in there, it's not being funded with El Cap. We received a grant from the Department of Justice, and that's how we're funding the SROs. We're not doing away with our adult ed program, we have a grant from the state of California. So we're gonna continue to provide these services with grant and/or state categorical funding. So we wanted just to make sure that our stakeholders knew that these weren't being discontinued, they're just funded outside of the El Cap. Dual enrollment, I just want to point out, this is really, really cool. We're gonna continue to have courses and expand the next year, where our high school students will take a course, like sports medicine, and get credit for high school sports medicine and get community college credit during the school day in kinesiology. We're working out some details with criminal justice, and I'm confident that we'll, in the spring, have a criminal justice co-top class. What that means, you get five credits a high school, three credits a college, you multiply that by three, you almost get fifteen credits for one course during the school day. So it's wonderful. We're gonna continue to make sure our kids have updated materials aligned with standards. There's your provide intervention and tutoring district-wide in math and English language arts. We've communicated to all of our principals, and we've asked that tutorial plans be established and communicated at the beginning of the school year with regular tutoring times. We've heard you, parents, and we're working on that to make that happen for all of you. Parent involvement activities, we fund a little bit through El Cap, a lot through Title I, and we fund one of our scheme literacy TOSAs through El Cap, the other through Title I. So in a nutshell, this is what the fifteen million dollars in nineteen twenty actions and services look like. If you want more specifics on the nineteen twenty El Cap, you can find those on pages eighty-three through one eighty-nine in the El Cap. But, or you can look here, this gives you a great summary. And again, we're always available for any questions. So this is draft one, and the county is reviewing it as well. And we will have the El Cap on the agenda next week for the approval, and then we get started doing great things.
And we work on some clerical corrections, there are two figures in there that need to be updated on, if I would caught it, but that was in the annual update. And goal three D, substance abuse intervention. It might look like we were spending four hundred and twenty thousand on it, it's twenty thousand. So we'll correct that. And then in the actions and services for next year, in goal four D, retain nutrition specialists. The figure for the current year was entered in there, so that will be corrected as well.
So again, it's available hard copy, if you'd like to sit and review any pages or available online. Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question in.
Yes, I'd like to ask a question in response to Mr. Ojeda speaking about what we looked at in our meeting. I'm assuming on pages eighty-three to one eighty-nine, because there's, there are just like those, those things listed, and then on other pages, there are amounts listed, but there's actually a breakdown of like how many teachers and what they're going to be paid, and all of those things, I remember seeing a sheet like that that had that breakdown of actual items and things.
Right, and that's our internal document.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, it's exactly what is in the LCAP.
Okay.
The LCAP is going to give you the total amount spent on each action and service. If you're curious on the impact of the actions and services that were implemented this year, it's called the annual review. For everything we do, we have to gather data and determine LCAP. And our teachers provide us with data, our administrators provide us with data. So if you're wondering, what was the impact of what we did this year? Pages six through eighty will provide you with that. We write to every action and service in detail. And the county even commented, "Wow, you guys really go into detail in analyzing your actions and services." So we really do take a lot of time looking back and reflecting. And the goal this year will be taking a look at implementation of services and making sure that we're implementing them most effective and making some shifts, like we've already done with some TOSSAs and the marketing of the tutoring programs at the beginning of the school year.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jerry?
I just want to say, this is one of my favorite committees. I was on it before I was elected to the board and then got to go back on. It's just an observer, I can't talk. But anyway, it's just amazing. So kudos to our staff and to all the parents that have input. Again, it's just advisory, but the idea is just circle the room, and everybody votes on the things that they feel most important or came up more times in the survey, so we know that parents and teachers think it's important too, and they've incorporated all this. So it isn't just the administrators figuring, "Oh, let's do this, let's..." There's so much input to it, and it has developed from way back when we started LCAP to where it is now. It's just amazing, so thank you.
It's really a powerful group and all of the contributions. And I will say, I am personally working with Ventura County Office of Education to contract with them to provide LCAP training. My understanding, the request was, let's train parents, the advisory committee, prior to having our first LCAP meeting. The county will come on in and give an overview, what LCAP is, what the purpose of the committee is, before we have meeting one and we start going through this. So that will happen prior to LCAP meeting number one. We're just working out details, and then we will bring information to the Board of Trustees on how we can do that prior to meeting one. So thank you.
And then the LCAP is, sorry, fifth or sixth year, I think. And so you go back, and it's supposed to increase our student achievement. That was the number one goal in every, one of these things is it has to tie back to student achievement. In the first, in one of the first LCAPs, we had a section that said, "Attract and retain highly qualified staff." And I hope that we haven't lost that, because now, what, eighty percent of our budget is LCAP, but it's no longer in our LCAP. So I just want to make sure that we are using money to retain and hire qualified staff. The other thing too that is frustrating in LCAP, the money keeps marching forward. These additions keep marching forward, but each year, we don't take time to really say, "Did this work? Or just didn't this work?" We create new positions. LCAP has created a number of new positions, and we really have no idea if they were effective in the classroom or to the students. I mean, I'm glad to hear that you're now going to have math tutors when the students need them and make available. But as a lot of government and bureaucracy is, you create a position, and it's like, it's there for life, even though it doesn't, the idea was good, but it hasn't, it hasn't turned out. So I hope that as we move forward, that we can start really looking at these positions, because the money has leveled out. We're not gonna, we don't see the pie getting any bigger, and that we just really need to drill down into what is making our students successful. Because unfortunately, when we come and get the test scores and we get the impressions in the county and at the parents, we have a lot of work to do, and it can start with the LCAP, because it's so much of a bunch of...
I'd like to thank you both for your presentation. Lots of good information and a good night to present. Six F, First Reading LCAP Federal Addendum. Each local education agency must submit a new, must submit a local board clue as an LCAP federal addendum to the Calvary Department of Education to meet federal, local education agency plan requirements to receive, for receipt of federal funds under Title A, Part A, Title II, Part A, and Title III, Part A, and Title IV. Part A of the Every Student Succeeds Act, beginning in the two thousand nineteen twenty school year, the addendum must address specified federal provisions for receipt of these funds. Approval of the federal addendum in conjunction with the consolidated application for funding categorical aid programs and the local control and accountability plan is required for all local education agencies as a condition of receipt of the federal program funds identified above. Dr. Cora?
Yes, as mentioned, as somebody, the LCAP federal addendum is meant to supplement the LCAP to ensure that eligible LEAs have the opportunity to meet the local educational agencies and plan provision of Every Student Succeeds Act, which is yes. Ms. Chukwue, want to give a brief?
You said a lot. Yes, this is, it's meant to supplement the LCAP to identify how federal funds are going to work in conjunction with LCFF funds. This is a new requirement. It replaces a No Child Left Behind. We now have the Every Student Succeeds Act. We used to have a LEA, a local educational agency, like a district plan. This is the new district plan, extremely streamlined, because we now have this. So this supplements, so we meet all the federal requirements. So this is the First Reading and Information Addendum, and I would like to thank Gina Ramidis, who worked hard to put this together.
Thank you.
You have a question from the board?
I just had one, just to follow up on what Mrs. Kolbeck said. When I was reading through this, it looked like a wonderful place to start breaking down the things that we're doing, why we're doing that, what we're using, what's the goal, what's the, and I'm sure you're working on that, to really show us, instead of just the fancy words, what's being done, how, you know, what goal was set, was it met? Just a lot more data.
Right.
This looked like the perfect place to break it apart and really dig in this next year.
So if you look at the LCAP, under the nineteen twenty actions and services, that every action and service begins with annual measurable objectives. And that's where we identify what metrics, state and local, are we going to look at to determine if our students are making progress. So as we are getting more data, that area is becoming more and more refined. And I think trustee Meade, you mentioned at LCAP, a wonderful idea of creating a local dashboard where we collect all of our local data. So I have our curriculum coordinators gathering summative end-of-year data for elementary math chapter assessments. I see some teachers and principals in here, as well as our reading data. So we are beginning to work on that local dashboard.
That would be wonderful. And what could be even more wonderful? Is if we could bring that to board meetings on a regular basis, so that all the parents can see where we are. If we're improving, we're going to celebrate. If we're not, we're going to find out why, we're going to change, and people at home can see. I really, I really like that.
It's because it's an area we can definitely improve.
Yes, we wanted to engage with the streaming that we now have available to us, to share our...
But we do, we have a lot of work to do, but we have a lot to celebrate in Santa Paula Unified, a lot of growth. So we need to highlight areas of focus, as well as highlight. Thank you.
This year's, I think it's this year's LCAP, I get confused. Is that we wanted to put student safety or school safety, and we allotted almost three-quarters of a million dollars. And yet, you know, because of this or that, it hadn't been spent, and so we need to know how and when that money was spent, so that we can communicate to the community that we took safety seriously, and this is what we did.
And it is in the annual update what we spent this year and what it was spent on. And again, those are the funds, the balance that'll roll over from next year, and we'll be able to get through the plans that are underway right now. And that'll be recorded again, and next year, we're going to update with the total amount that we spent next year.
Can we tell, can you tell us what projects? Because that was a nice statement.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You'll have to do it now, but I'm just saying, it's that kind of thing that needs to be broken down. We understand that, they're rolled over, we have safety an issue, but unless we start seeing what we did with our money and start understanding what we did with our money, people are concerned.
And again, it's part two in the annual update. We started a number of things this year with the buzzer system at Golden City Renaissance, and we're working on a restructure of the entry gate at Golden City in conjunction with the buzzer system, to make it comply with safety regulations. We're going to continue to install buzzer systems with the remainder of the sites that it is easily done. And then we'll continue to do infrastructure, add corrections to the front to accommodate those changes. We're working on rekeying the district so that we have control of our property to make sure that Golden City residents have access to our building, have access to our building. There's a number of other projects, and then we'll also then begin looking at cameras across the district.
Well, thank you, Sheri, or Miss Sheri Dog. And I'd like to point out that this is the first full year, first, first full year of Ms. Sheri's position, she's been in this position, and Dr. Cora. So we're starting to stabilize. You will see improvements next year. We're on a roll, and we're always going to go up. Okay, so let's go on to public hearing on the two thousand nineteen twenty adopted budget. Dr. Cora?
Yes, very quickly, for the public hearing, the Board of Trustees of Santa Paula Unified School District will consider input from the public on the two thousand nineteen twenty adopted budget, and the budget will be available for review by Friday, May thirty-first, which it was at four P.M. here at the district office. So at this time...
I will open the public hearing on the adopted nineteen, two thousand nineteen twenty adopted budget at seven fifty-five P.M. Are there any comments or public input? You have three minutes?
Once again, good evening, members of the board, parents and students. Buenas tardes, members of the board, padres y estudiantes. I would like to suggest that also each school has a workshop that will prepare those parents for LCAP input, because as, as I understand, I understand a little bit, but not enough to give a good input. And I guess sometimes to hear someone that is very professional and use specific words, it will have, it will be hard for us to understand what it means exactly. Because what I have learned is because I have been struggling here and there in the website, California Department of Education, videos in YouTube, but the right thing to do is that I have the right for someone to come to my school, my district, to give me a training.
I just want to say, I can, I can... I don't want my son to use this as a tool to get money, because she does not sell her son about the tutoring services that we were talking about. Her son should have been qualified in fourth grade.
Her, her student was at brick school, or her child was at brick school, and he inherited Santa Paula Unified. She does not want her son to be used as a tool to get money, because she does not sell her son about the tutoring services that we were talking about. And each of the, she left off with her son should have been qualified in fourth grade.
When my son was in the district of Briggs, he received tutoring. Something that I, in this district, passed all the way, and I received tutoring for this program. I wanted to know, in what way did I invest this money? Because my son is an emergency.
She would like to know what, what the money that was allotted for tutoring services, what was it really used for, because her son did not get any of the tutoring services that have been discussed tonight. She, she got a message from Dr. Friday yesterday, or last week regarding the kids that were inappropriately dropped off as a result of the lockdown, and she doesn't feel that the kids should be used as a learning tool.
Hello, you all know me, Janet Hanga. I just want to give a couple of maybe suggestions. Like, I hear a lot of the parents saying, "We don't know what's going on with the budget. We don't know what's going on with the money." Maybe before you get on this, this, to adopt or approve or whatever, like it came out May thirty-first, maybe after May thirty-first, you can have a parent meeting and explain to the parents that really want to know what's going on, instead of having them come here and then have no knowledge of what to even ask. I don't know what to ask about this budget, because it wasn't, I, I didn't even look at it. So I true, I haven't even looked at the budget. I haven't even looked at the LCAP. Going back to the LCAP and all these meetings, maybe, and I suggest this really strongly, that you don't have LCAP meetings at the same time at two different schools, because we can't attend both. We can't give input for the children that are at Isbell and at the high school, and that seems to happen a lot here, which is, it's undermining the purpose of these meetings. So I suggest next year that you get a big calendar, and you do not put two things on the same day for these parents and our students, because I couldn't go to the LCAP at the high school. I couldn't go to the LCAP at Isbell. I had to pick one. How am I going to pick what? How am I going to pick what student, what child of mine needs more? I can't do that. And you guys can't continue to do this to the parents. Because we are working hard to help you educate our children. And if you want us to continue to help you, then you need to help us and do your job correctly and make right decisions. I do see decisions coming. I'm wearing this shirt because I have an alumni of high school, Santa Paula High School, but it saddens me because my junior high student.
I will close the public hearing at 8:03 P.M. We will go to 6H, the 2019-20 adopted budget. Dr. Cora?
Thank you, President Riz. Annually, an adopted budget must be approved by the board trustees on before June 30, 2019. The board will be requested to consider adoption of the budget at the June 19 board meeting. And our Assistant Superintendent of Services, Mr. Shesky, has a presentation on the budget.
Good evening, board, audience. Okay, so the moment you hold me.
Okay, shut the lights.
So tonight is the quote-unquote first reading of the budget. It will be adopted next week, so the purpose is for the community to see it ahead of time and then such will come back for an adoption. Same thing with the LCAP. Go to our line? Please, okay? Okay. Tonight, we're going to look at the assumptions that are included in the adopted budget. We're going to look at the estimated actuals, which is for the current year, how do we estimate? We're going to end the current year, and then again, the adopted budget side by side. We will take a look at a multi-year projection that looks at the adopted budget plus two years, which is required by education code. And then we are also required to look at our components of any fund balance. This came along with the cap on any fund balance that was provided by CE's legislative number of years ago. And I'll open it up for any questions and answers. So here's a list of the assumptions that are included in the adopted budget. And the assumptions are what we use to calculate our revenues and our expenses. So next year, we are anticipating a decline in enrollment from the current year of about 2%, which would put us at 5,157 students. And we are projecting further decline in the out years of 1%. And you can see that would put us at 5,105 in the next year and 5,054 in the last year. Through the state of California, districts are funded on the greater ADA. ADA is our average daily attendance. So how many students do we have and how long are they in their seat throughout the year? It assumes there, the full 180 days, we get 1 ADA. If they're less than that day, we get a portion of 1 ADA. So you can see, and so we have to estimate our ADA in next year. We're estimating it, again, the 2% decline, which will put us at 4,927 ADA. And again, the 1% decline in the two subsequent years. Again, we're funded on the higher, so that would be last year, we're going down year over year. So we will actually be funded up the current year ADA of 5,028. That is an assuming continued ADA percentage of 95.6, which is what we have in the current year. From the state of California, we are provided with our COLA for next year, 3.26. And then we have estimates in the out years of 3% and 2.8%. What this does is it calculates our increase in revenue. All things remaining equal, we will get 3.26% more next year than this year. If we have the same number of students and the same ADA. We get lottery funds from the state, both unrestricted and restricted. We get $151 per student in unrestricted lottery and we get $53 per student in restricted. Utilities, we're estimating a 5% increase year over year. And below, you can see the staffings that we have estimated in our certificate, which are our teaching staff and our classified, as well as our management and our confidential employees. Because we are declining by 2% and 1%, we have a decline in number of FTEs and teaching staff based off reduction of 50-plus students every year. Are there any questions on the assumptions? Thanks, all right. There we go. All right, here is our estimated actuals in our adopted budget on the left. This is the 18, 19 estimated actuals. Do I have? All right. So we have total estimated revenues currently at $54.7 million. And in next year, we're estimating $54 million. You might ask why it is less when we are actually getting more in state funding year over year? Because in the current year, we got some one-time federal funds for FEMA and our Medical Administrative Activities Dollars that we don't budget for the next year. We also received a sizable amount of state one-time mandate reimbursement monies of almost a million dollars. So you can see the reduction in the subsequent year that we, there is no state one-time monies proposed at this time. So even though it went up in LCFF revenue, we're down in our one-time, so we're almost flat funding from this year to next year. Then we look at our total expenditures. We're estimating to, in the current year, to spend approximately $55, almost $2 million. And next year, we're going up to $55, almost $5 million. Again, we have increases in step and column for our existing staff, a movement on the salary schedule from one year to the next. We will see that in our both certificated salaries and classified salaries. We also will have increases, increased costs for our employee benefits. And that's because we pay a portion of their retirement to pers and sirs, depending on the type of employee they are, and those rates are continuing to increase through the employers. And then we have our books and supplies, looks pretty steady. We had a large purchase of technology in the current year, and we've pushed the textbook adoption into the next year, which made these expenditures seem almost flat. And then we have our services. We have an increase there, again, that's where you'll find utilities and other costs that are going to be increasing in the out years. We have capital outlay in the current year of $90 million. Next year, we're projecting $40 million, and this is in the LCAP.
Forty thousand?
Forty, forty thousand, did I say million?
Yes.
And then other outgo, these are our expenses for our county students with special needs, for county programs. We get billed for those services. In the current year, we had recognized some expenses from the prior year, so it's 2.3 in the current year and 2.2 in the next year, almost 2.3. That particular line is very hard to project because IDPs take those costs. And as students have additional needs, we need to provide services for those students. Indirect are the indirect costs we get from our restricted categorical programs like Title I and Title II. And so then we have our total expenditures. In the current year, we're estimating that we will deficit spend about half a million dollars. That means our revenues were less than our expenditures by half a million dollars. In the next year, it looks like we're deficit spending 1.4 million. I want to caution you, it's technically speaking about $800,000 less. Again, because we are spending $800,000 right here in books and supplies for our textbook adoption and social science across the district, grades TK through 12. So deficit spending is actually approximately $600,000. An increase in the prior year of about 100. All that being said, we estimate to end the current year about $15.3 million in ending fund balance. That's kind of our savings account. And then with what we will be spending next year, at the end of the next year, we estimate it will be $13.85 million. Any questions before I move on to the multi-year projection? Okay. So now we have three years side by side. This is the adopted budget year, we just went over all of these numbers. And so, again, we're at $54 million for next year. We don't see much change there either. Again, we have some one-time state revenues here that complicate it. We have two state grants, one for classified professional development and one for low-performing students. That was a two-year grant, we received it this year very late in the year. It is a two-year as well as a classified professional. So we will not have spent any in the current year, we'll spend it all next year. But when we get to 20, 21, we don't have those funds anymore. So you can see the reduction right there. Another reason you don't see much growth in revenues from 1920 to 2021 in LCFF is because we're funded our prior year. So we are not experiencing the 2% decline in here until there. And then you'll see a huge jump here because we're projecting only a 1% decline in the two subsequent years. So we'll get a big jump here, along with cost of living adjustment. So we're kind of flat, and then we got a little bump here of almost a million dollars from the prior year. We look at total expenditures. We're at $55.5 million, we go up to almost $56 million, and then we're at $56.7 million. And this is the most important line right here. Again, it looks like we're deficit spending 1.4, it's really about $600,000. But this is true deficit, true projected deficit spending in 2021 of almost $2 million. And since we get much more revenue in the next year, we've offset some of that, and now we're down to 1.7. We're currently in negotiations with some of our unions, and we've reached tentative agreements. It's important to note, none of these settlements are incorporated into the adopted budget because they have not been approved by the board yet. All that being said, at the end of '21, '22, we estimate our ending fund balance to be approximately $10.2 million. Below, you can see how those funds are broken out. We have what's called our non-spendables, we have an outside account, which is our revolving cash account. If we need to write checks quickly, we need to have some funds available, that's the $6,600 right there. We have a number of assignments, which you will see on the next page when we talk about ending fund balance. And then per ed code, we are required, based on the size of our school district, to retain a 3% reserve. That's the $2.2 million here that you see in every year. It changes because it's based off of your total expenditure, so you take that 3%, that one, and that one. And then this is the balance. This is what's your total available fund balance after all of your assignments and reservations. Any questions about the multi-year projection? Okay, and here again is another requirement that we take a closer look at our ending fund balance and how those assignments and reservations, what they mean and what they're for. So we're going to look at the four years, the current year, budget year, and two subsequent years. So these will match the prior slides. We estimate this year we'll have $15.3 million. We have our revolving cash. And in the current year, we have what's called prepaid, so things that we had to pay right now that are for next year. It's an accounting situation, we need to hold it in reserves, so that's why that number is different than the three out years. The next is our commitments. These were formal actions by the board to set aside funds for textbook adoptions. This is the cumulative total of the balance as of right now. We will be, and as I talked about in the multi-year projection, those are budgeted next year. So you can see the reserve here because we haven't spent it. And it's not there in the out years because we were planning to spend it next year. In the current year, we have, we're estimating that about $75,000 to cite discretionary funds will not be spent. So we are setting those aside as in a reserve, but those finals, those numbers aren't final. So we're keeping it in a reserve until the year end. Same thing with projected LCAP carryover, about $300,000. Those are the dollars that we plan to add in addition to the safety measure money for next year to complete the number of projects that we're currently in the middle of and then to look forward to additional projects that are having to spend with various committees. We have some other assignments for East Area Startups, that's the school over in the Lewis-Levyman area development. About, they've been setting aside half a million dollars for the last few years in anticipation of that project. We also have a reservation for our vacation liability, so we have a member of employees that accrue vacation. If they were to leave, we need to pay out that vacation. So that's a liability we need to recognize and set aside. And then we also receive Medical or MA dollars for MA billable expenditures of the district. We keep those funds set aside to put back into those program services. And then, of course, our economic uncertainty are 3% every year. And then that bottom number is this minus all of these numbers, the difference this year. So this is, these are funds that are not tagged for any purpose at this point. So those are components of any fund balance. Are there any questions? Okay. The adopted budget will be coming again to the board.
I'm just the same as Sheri.
It's easier for me. Um, I know it's getting to be a long nine, a lot of.
Oh, sure.
It ties in with the LCAP. Thank goodness we had a huge reserve. Because a couple years ago, before you had HAMC, we had a $21 million reserve. And if you look in those out years, we found down to $10 million. And we can't keep pretending that we're making money. So we really need to become serious about our budget or there'll be the headlines like Ochsner, you know, $9 million deficit, 78 teachers laid off. We have to get our priorities straight. Number one, the education of our students. And number two, how we're going to fund it and keep it under. And not, and not keep hiring, not keep fluffing, whatever. We need to really drill down on that. And so I just want to make sure that everyone knows, thank goodness, we had that buffer. But guess what? That runs out. The states are going to come and give us another $20 million. We're lucky to be in this position, but we got to stop it now. We can't just keep saying, oh, we'll correct it later on.
Thank you. Okay, I know many of you are here for the dual-language immersion portion. We will take a break after that so that we can be mindful of your time and get you homes and ourselves home as soon as possible. 7A, donations. Do I have a motion for approval of action item 7A?
Summon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those, well, I would like to say that we had many donations and in-kind donations. So all of the donations count, and we appreciate them all. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero. 7B, approval of 2019-20 school year calendars. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 2019-20 school year calendars.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
I'm sorry.
Jerry. If there's no discussion, shall we vote for approval of the school year calendar? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes for zero. 7C, second reading, history, social science textbook adoption, grade six to eight. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
On what? On 7C? Oh, 7B, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes for zero. 7D, dual-language immersion program recommendation. Do I? No. So.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. We have a public comment. That's what we've been waiting for. Three public comments today? Let me go with another one, so. Here it is. Are there more?
There are six, D and 6B.
Oh, okay, they're all then, okay. I would like to bring to the podium Anna Arroyo.
Good evening, board members. I would like to express my support for DLI, which is long overdue as many parents. I would like to express my support for DLI, which is long overdue as many parents, staff, people who no longer have kids in the district. Thank you for taking the steps to research and plan DLI. I saw the attachment in the agenda and it's very well thought out. Perhaps a little bit more outreach at the beginning to the preschools. I have a feeling that we're gonna need plenty more school sites, probably three at each school site, who knows? And I strongly believe that this will be an asset to our LCAP improvement. I believe that when, especially for me, speaking for myself, that if I would have received a DLI, my Spanish would be a lot better, I would be more globally ready to work internationally. I'm very fortunate that one of my son took the opportunity on his own to take Spanish classes. And I wish I would've been a better parent to push him more, but there's only so many hours in the day and there's, you need fun, exercise, quality times, not just education. So I applaud you and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, parents, and students here present. I would like to thank Ms. Vias for bringing this to the attention of the community for DLI because I consider myself that it will help students, especially because our community is eighty-something percent, ninety percent Latino community. So I have been part of the school site council, ILAC, ZILAC, LCAP. And I have heard this comment that many of the students that are not reclassified are because they are struggling with their English. And because they are struggling with English, they're struggling with another subjects like math, science, any subject. Creo yo que es una muy buena oportunidad que trajo atención a señora Vias porque meses atrás ella trajo esto al tema de traer doble inversión aquí a nuestro distrito y creo que es algo que beneficiaría mucho a los estudiantes. Ya que yo soy parte del consiglo escolar, comité de ILAC, comité de DILAC, este vengo a las juntas de LCAP y en casi todas las cosas, o todas las juntas he escuchado que una de los problemas que existen para que los niños sean reclasificados es porque es difícil por el inglés. Entonces, por ese problema que tienen con el inglés, para ellos es difícil comprender y asumir otras materias como matemáticas, ciencia, o cualquier otra materia. Entonces creo que esto ayudaría bastante a que nuestros estudiantes se ganen adelante because at this moment around seventy-five percent of our students in the district are behind, especialmente porque alrededor del setenta y cinco por ciento de los estudiantes de nuestro distrito están entrasados. Y creo que es una forma de poder ayudarnos a ver si esto puede ayudarles a mejorar académicamente en cada uno de sus materias, especially because I guess it will help to help them to achieve any of the subjects they are taking. And thank you, Ms. Vias, for bringing this to the district. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Ms. Vara.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Nathan Ramos Rodriguez. I'm a former graduate of Stanford High School. I graduated last week. I'm here to support dual immersion only because of my experience growing up in the school district. I went from Bar Webster to Isbell Middle School to Stanford High School. And what I saw was a lot of stereotypes happening towards our English learners. Our English learners even have themselves segregated from our native English speakers because they don't feel adequate enough to be around them. They don't feel like they can be around them because they feel like they're being stigmatized by this. And allowing dual immersion will allow them to access same language, allow everyone to feel equal at school, bringing down that common stereotype where English learners are not capable of doing the same work as they can. But the reality is they can. Our English learners can achieve the same work ethic as our native English speakers. But the problem is they access the language that is being presented in front of them. So I believe with dual immersion, it will allow them to access, access the same language, uh, access the same education, access the same workload, and allow them, allow them to break down the stigma that has been attached to them. When you look at the high school right now, we have a section of high school that is just filled with English learners because they won't go beyond that because of that stigma that they face. But now if our students grow up with dual immersion, if it breaks down that stigma, our students will not see them as English learners, but as other students equal to them. So not only will dual immersion promote academic success, but also de-stigmatize what is there for our English learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. When I became aware of the possibility, possibility that the Board was considering a dual language immersion program here at SPUSD, I immediately contacted Ms. Shepherd to gather some more information. Since that time, I have been super fadiz with the amount of progress that has been, you know, made. So the World Language Department and I, both Isbell and SPHS, in conjunction with other teachers and club advisors, do our due diligence to instill as much pride in our Latino students with the strong programs we currently have in place. However, with the passage of the district's first DLI program at our elementary schools, you, the Board, are proclaiming to the community that there is power in bilingualism. You're laying down the foundation of a belief that being bilingual matters, that strengthening proficiency in another language is just as important as strengthening our students' proficiency in English. You're also establishing that the family members of our students that only speak Spanish truly matter. I know I am preaching to the choir here, so I will be, I will end my time here with the following. I am agradecido, thankful to the Board for even considering this much-needed program for our students and community. I am emocionado, excited for all the academic possibilities our future students in the district will have in their newly established academic career. And I am orgulloso, proud to be an educator here at SPUSD now more than ever. Thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Now, is there any discussion from the Board? Ms. Ning?
I just wanted to say I'm so excited. I, I had my fingers crossed for a long time that this would come up. And this is one of the things when I was out campaigning that the community was really behind, so it was, it was fun to hear. And I'm glad we got this step, so.
I'm grateful too because, because dual immersion came up years ago, but nothing ever really moved forward. So I think all of our staff, they finally get it moving in the right direction. Because you can sit around in meetings and talk about a lot of things, but unless it gets to this stage, nothing happens.
Well, fortunately, I had a chance to review the dual immersion program at Oxford Elementary and came back totally sold on it. Eighth grade Anglo girls were speaking Spanish. I mean, I don't know Spanish that well, but I know hers was pretty good. And so as Mr. Varela said, knowing Spanish or two languages is a superpower. Kids are scoring off the charts in their, in their core curriculum. I think this program might bring kids back to our district if, if parents know that this program's being held here in the district, they may decide to bring their child here. And the students teach each other. The teacher isn't the sole role model. The students teach each other and that's all part of the play of, of dual immersion. And everybody's language is respected, both languages are celebrated. It is a core subject. It's not enrichment. If we value multiculturalism, diversity, and biliracy, then we're gonna vote for this tonight. So with that, let's have a vote on the dual language immersion program recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes for zero.
My grandkids are my local Japanese.
I know.
Yeah, I love them. I love them.
She's very excited.
That is all.
He's got my freaking heart.
Really, yeah.
He'd be nice.
I kinda like those stories.
I'm sure he likes the prospect.
But it can be interesting.
So we got to check what...
You know, here's what you listen to.
I was running down the street.
I wish I made nine.
It's gonna be...
The place was really tough.
He's a poor idiot.
Are you doing?
Yeah, I always see me. I got, I'm like, a little bit, I got a CV for this. I ran back, took it out of the pot, I quit my shredding. I got to eat the cake, we're having rice and chips. I'm about to go, I'm about to get it. I'm gonna tell her, I'm telling her. For the graduation. I went over there because I... I ordered it on Tuesdays. I went Monday and Tuesday. So Monday I helped them fill the little, the little graduation days and I put the little tickets in there and I do it. And so then when I went on Tuesday, I said... My child will love me one of the ones that comes to make this morning. Because I will know. And so that, and so that's. I see them on that little camera phone. They have to, they have to buzz. I hear, you know, I hear the buzz and I push the button and they click. The president, they have to hit the buzzer, so I click on the little buzzer. So I have such a, oh, the six talk. Are you, move the door, please.
Bye, see you. For the diehards. Okay, seven E. Memorandum of understanding between.
A little quiet.
Okay, thank you. Seven E memorandum of understanding between California Association for bilingual education and Santa Paula Unified. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seven N. Adoption of the governance book for the board of trustees. On March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, the board of trustees and superintendent participated in a workshop on effective governance. As a result, the board and superintendent bring forward this handbook, which will enable the governance team to continue to perform its responsibilities in a way that best serves all students. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Second. Okay, Pam Thompson seconded. Um, discussion. Okay, uh, let me see. So if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I abstain.
Three, in favor, one abstention for the governance handbook. I would just like to say the governance handbook, um, becomes a, it becomes a living document. It can be reviewed and updated and it empowers the board and superintendent to become a highly effective governance team. So, um. Just wanted to say that about having a governance and so it's helpful to our staff to know how the board is expected to, the board superintendent is supposed to act and carry out their duties. So, thank you for passage of the governance, uh, the governance handbook. Oh, all those in favor, I agree. Seven G memorandum of understanding between CSEA, chapter eight nine one and Santa Paula Unified School District dated May second, two thousand nineteen, regarding the effects of layoff human resource specialists classified. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven H memorandum of understanding between CSEA, chapter eight nine one and Santa Paula Unified School District dated May second, two thousand nineteen, regarding professional development funds. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we pass seven H.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven I. Approval of two thousand eighteen nineteen district representatives California Interscholastic Federation Southern section. Motion to approve?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Second reading and adoption California School Board Association policy updates, March two thousand nineteen. Motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero. Motion passes four zero. Uh, seven K resolution, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon twenty-seven appropriation transfers for two thousand nineteen twenty. May I have a motion?
Five.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven L resolution, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon twenty-eight, authority for the board of trustees to approve compensation for certain categories of employees for two thousand nineteen twenty. Is there a motion?
Some. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven M. Resolution, two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, colon twenty-nine, temporary loans between district funds for two thousand nineteen twenty. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None opposed, motion passes four zero. Seven N resolution, two thousand eighteen, colon, uh, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon thirty, transfer to the deferred maintenance fund for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. Is there a motion?
Some. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven O. Resolution, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon thirty-one, approval to utilize piggyback bids for goods and services throughout the fiscal year, two thousand nineteen twenty. Do I have a motion?
Some. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Seven P. Resolution, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon thirty-two, resolution regarding the two thousand eighteen nineteen education protection account. May I have a? Approval?
I make a motion to pass seven P.
Uh, discussion? All those. Who's A? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero. Motion passes four zero. Seven Q. Resolution, two thousand eighteen nineteen, colon thirty-three, resolution regarding the two thousand nineteen twenty education protection account. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Consent calendar. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, but I'd like to call A F. A F.
So your motion is, uh, to approve A, A through E and G through K? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Four, four, two, four, zero. Zero M's? Uh, A F contracts.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, um, I just wanted to point out that one of the contracts is for the speech therapy and, um, I hope that we are actively looking for, um, speech therapists, um, because we all know that, um, computer screen isn't always as helpful as a real person, especially some smaller children with speech. So I just want to emphasize that you know, to fill in the gap, because it's a good program, but we need to keep looking.
If I could make a comment on that, um, thank you, Ms. Colbeck. Um, I've been aware, this has been brought to my attention by several different, um, staff members. Um, I'm going to give, uh, Liz Perez, speech teacher at Isabelson Credit. Um, she gave a couple of, I always, I always say if there's a concern, give us possible solutions. And she gave me a couple, she said, one check that there, she thought there were a couple of, um, applications that were in our system. Doctor Torres checked into those. And then the other one that she gave us is a suggestion I thought was excellent, to send a message out, email is the easiest way, to all of the universities throughout California, just saying, if you have students that are finishing up their programs, speech programs, and get their credential, um, contact us here in Santa Paula and they can get a job. I won't say automatically, but if they qualify, they can get themselves a job. So again, um, so Liz Perez, I thank her for giving us the solutions or possible solutions. But I've been aware, we've been working on it and, um, the goal, publicly, I want to make this, um, very clear. The goal is not to have presence learning replace teachers. That's publicly, make that a point. So, we're trying, very hard.
You know, um, I've been really checking on this, there's very few programs in state of California, it's only probably about twenty-something. And Northridge is our closest university in Cal State LA. I've reached out to Cal State LA, still waiting for a response from them. I've actually been in contact with Dr. Hall, who is the chair for the speech app program down at, um, at Northridge. So I'm going to be working with them to, uh, hopefully once the beginning of the school year, to actually actively go into the classrooms and, uh, make presentations to the, the current students that they have that will be graduating. So even though I might not necessarily assist for this year right now, I think in the, in the future, you know, um, working with the universities and being able to actually go and have conversations with the classes, I think, uh, like in my previous district, that's really helped and allowed me to do recruitment, especially for those hard to fill positions in STEM and speech and things like that. So we definitely, I mean, I've definitely been in contact and trying to work on, um, you know, try to boost, uh, you know, interest in, um, the districts.
And we are also, um, actually discussing possibilities and maybe some incentives, because speech teachers are so highly sought after and some of them will go into the medical field before they go into the education field. So we have to give some type of incentive, so we're talking about some possibilities.
And I also, um, think that maybe partnerships with the higher education, um, facilities is, I know there's maybe a lot of willing students, but then I think it's probably getting into the next year's programs. You know, we can help anyway to get more students, um, that, that would be.
Yes, I, I would like to, uh, piggyback on the discussion in that, um, our speech therapists that we currently have, they're few in number, but mighty in speaking out. No kind of gent. But, uh, so I, I'm glad this, this issue is coming to the surface and it appears it's being addressed.
Doing our best.
Okay. All right, so, um, did we get a motion to approve? Yes. All those in favor of F, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Nine. Board member comments and requests. Ms. Colbeck?
I, I had to look at my calendar to see where I was at, because I was still confused, always looking to where I was supposed to go. So the last couple of weeks have been really a wonderful time. It's a great time to see student successes and we commend all those that have been promoted and graduated into the parents. And it's, uh, um, it's a great thing for Santa Paula to see three hundred and seventy students graduate from the high school. Um, and I look forward in July to help set new goals. I think tonight we have a really good starting point with parent comments, with safety, bullying, communication, SAR, and the quality teachers. And those are only what they mentioned tonight. So, um, I think we have our work cut out for us and although, you know, July is traditionally a pretty much vacation time, we know in the district, no one ever gets to rest. So we thank everyone for their hard work and we're also thankful, school is, summer school is starting tomorrow and not, um, Monday or Tuesday when it was like a hundred degrees. So thank you.
Mrs. Mead?
I'm going to piggyback on what Michelle said, the celebrations this year, uh, the schools were absolutely wonderful. I fell in love with all of them and wish I could have gone to all of them. So kudos to the principals that are here, the staff that aren't here and all the kids, they were, they were wonderful. The senior walk was amazing. I got to see that at one school and like I said, they're all different and, and have characteristics of that, the culture of the school where the students went. So that was, that was fun. Um, Isabel promotion, Renaissance graduation and I, my apologies to the high school, I was not able to attend. But on the other side, I got to watch my granddaughter sing and speak at Newberry Park High School and it was so fun. So I, I hope I was excused from that. And I just wanted to say for the people that are watching, um, and I think we need to say it each time, is the reason we go through the action items so quickly is because of our staff. And anytime we have questions, we ask, we get immediate answers and our questions are, are answered and a lot of them are, are routine. And just as a final comment, um, for future, um, board meetings, I really am serious about wanting, requesting that, um, updates on academic achievement is brought to the meeting so that the board knows, the parents know, they can watch it on streaming. And if this is going to be our top priority, I think it needs to be a part of every, of every board meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes, um, well, I also had, I would, I'm really glad that you're here because the Grace Phil Young Writers Night, um, combined with, um, singing, it was a, it was an extravaganza of singing and, and recorder, kids, like forty kids playing, students playing recorder, recorder at one time and skits. And it was just great, grateful, I'm so grateful that I was able to be there because most of my experience has been in high school. So it's just really fun for me to see elementary and middle school. And, uh, those were all, you know, helped along by the teachers and the wonderful, indomitable Donna Rose, uh, helping out. So, and then the Isabel Young Writers Awards, which is fabulous and those students, uh, some of the thing, the ideas that they have and, and what they write, it's just, it was very touching many times. Also the Rotary Scholarship Night, giving, uh, our top seniors, uh, scholarships was fabulous. And all of the graduations, the Isabel graduation, Renaissance High School and the high school graduations were just really great. And I want to say also, um, um, thank you to all of the teachers in, in Santa Paula throughout the ages. Because a former student of mine, Lina Vermontes, um, posted on Growing in Santa Paula. Um, if you had a favorite teacher, you know, write something and so over a thousand, there were, there weren't that many posts, but in each post sometime, there would be five and six and seven teachers mentioned. And going back to the fifties, people saying, I remember Mr. So-and-so, uh, you know, and, um, over a thousand teachers and many of them over and over. And I can't say enough for, sorry, for the dedication that those teachers have and everyone else who makes everything possible for our students. And yes, we have problems, but you know what? I have, I have really great suggestions for the parents and I love seeing all these parents here tonight. If you, when I used to teach at the high school, I noticed every, back to school night, my honors classes would be full of parents. Right? Just full of parents, honors classes. My regular ed classes, not so many parents. So what does that tell you right there? What does that tell you? It's, the parents are the key, I think. What does that tell you? It's, the parents are the key, I think. I mean, you, and so I congratulate the teachers, all the support people, all the administrators and the parents for a job well done this year, because seeing those three graduations, I get goosebumps just talking about it, it was, it was fabulous, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Um, I think Mrs. Thompson hit the nail on the head when she said, yes, we have problems, but we also have very many things to be proud of in Santa Paula Unified, many things, and, uh, I would like to start with the Isabel Middle School teacher, Jan San, who got the Teacher of the Year Award for the county, and so as soon as that happened, I arranged a visit to his classroom on May twentieth, and I can see why he is, he received that award. He is so respectful of his students, he doesn't react to their outbursts, he just flows with it, he just goes with it, and, um, I think it was a real privilege to observe his class, and I also visited other classrooms while at Isabel, and it was, uh, a, a, I'm just really, really happy about that particular honor for one of our teachers. Uh, while I was at Isabel, I got to visit the newly finished literacy center. That is a remarkable place to be. It's in blue and white, it's beautiful, it's really beautiful, so I think that will enhance the learning atmosphere at the Isabel Middle School right now. Ag Academy, they have their awards night on Friday, May twenty-fourth, now that was pretty impressive as well. All these ag students conducting the program outside in center courts, and it was a beautiful evening, and good food, and friends, and family. That's what, um, if my high school experience could have been like that, that would have been great. It was a wonderful night, and to be celebrated. And the senior awards night, uh, so, so many millions or hundreds of thousands, I don't know, forgot, half a million dollars was, uh, doled out in scholarships. In particular, I'd like to mention that Latino Town Hall awarded ten awards to the high school at five hundred dollars each, and the Santa Paula Latino Town Hall also donated four five hundred dollar scholarships to Renaissance High School. So, um, all the civic organizations and groups that raise money and give it to our students, they're to be commended. I'd like to thank the board for passing the DLI immersion program. That's a path to success, and this may seem out of place, but I feel like I need to mention it, I spoke with Mr. Garnino, our, our previous superintendent, he's, um, finishing up his first year at his new district, he's doing splendidly, him and his family are quite happy, so, um, if we sort hard enough, there is silver lining on the other side, and I'm really, really happy to report that, and we do keep in contact, and he's doing well, so that's something good to report on. Okay, so, um. Oh, thank you. Number ten, future agenda items, uh, we have a speaker for from Mrs. Ortega.
Leadership, Ms. Cora, thank you. I said, I see the leadership that you've given, and I see our future is bright. I'm happy to see many have learned from their mistakes, so that no other kids suffer, but I'm formally requesting that bullying, safety, and the ASB audit be put up the agenda. Um, we need a timeline to know when that's going to be done. I don't want to come back to three months from now, like I did four, five, six months ago, and requested this formally then. Um, things need to happen now, not after the fact. I'm glad all the kids are on vacation. As parents, we don't get vacation, so, um, I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Cora, and for your leadership that you've given, and I hope that your leadership trickles down, and people take into consideration, and don't return to the ways that they had, so just thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ortega. Future meeting, our next, uh, well, our special board meeting will be a week from today, June nineteenth, at six P M, here in the district office, and our regular board meeting will be July tenth. Uh, that will probably also be here, um, in the district office. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at nine oh nine P M. Thank you all.